That leads us to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I am business discussion with Midcoast appraisal regarding annual assessing maintenance. I believe you are Midcoast assessing and would you like to come forward or how to our? We don't need to holler at you in the back. Well, we can come forward, come forward.
You're trying to be Julia, Julia appraisal.
It's the same name of all God, which you probably.
Say you know.
So we are Midcoast appraisal.
Yes, please do give your names for the for the tape.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Watson.
My name is Mark Watson.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So what can you tell us annual assessing maintenance?
Well, I think I'd like to hear what it is that you need. My our kind of goal today is to hear what it is you're looking for and then see if we can help you with that.
Do you have the numbers?
Yes, and I sent them to Jennifer. We have total eighty seven building permits. So twenty five of those are for new residential dwellings. And then we have some docks, ramps and floats, some solar arrays and other general permits like sheds and that sort of thing.
So twenty five are new residential direct remes or again just docks?
Yes.
It's the solar arrays, I think you said were some of those.
Yeah, there's five of those.
So like residential type solar arrays up there.
One is one is commercial.
Okay.
So I think what we're trying to achieve in time for commitment is to evaluate what our building permits are, both with pictures and measurement from that perspective. We're not looking for you to provide value on that. It's a completely different element to this segment. And it's strictly just to help us with our building permits.
I think that's something that was that was going to be my first point that I can't. As an appraiser, I'm bound by use path and so I'm an appraiser, not an assessor. And those are two different functions, so I wouldn't be able to help you with that. So that's good. You're not asking for that.
Yeah, not yet.
Yeah, we are definitely well qualified to do what it is that you need. Because it's a function of the appraisal is to go out on inspections and measure buildings and take pictures and interface with the public.
And part of what what we're gonna need is making sure you're duly insured. And that just so that we are covered. It's important to town that that we have a liability coverage.
Okay, yeah, I have errors and emissions. And you know, our car insurance should be covered, you know, with liability and all that sort of thing. We're fully covered, so I don't think that should be a problem, but I can check on that and make sure.
And just to hopefully go down the path that should do it with a named insurer on that while you're out there.
I'm sorry?
Or a named insurer once you are given the opportunity.
Okay.
And I presume, I mean, what we're looking for, an hourly, I don't know. What do you think is the best way to manage this?
So what I think we ought to do is kind of get our, because we did get some, you know, some basic statistics, the number of permits and things that were what you needed looked at. But I'd like the opportunity to kind of have this meeting and then go back and have our own little meeting and then get you a proposal.
Of course, yeah.
So I'm not quite sure right now. We need to discuss it a little more as to, you know, hourly or per site or, you know, maybe just knowing what the the need is, just a contract amount. So I'm not quite sure yet.
And we are either. We're looking at to do what's best for the community. And hypothetically speaking, ballpark, and I'm not gonna hold you to the timeline, more so from our moving forward to the next step, not what do you think you may need to complete.
So then do you need them by?
Tomorrow.
That's not gonna work.
I mean, yesterday, I know.
As soon as possible, right? I think the the question would be, when could you start this project for us?
Well, let's see. We had we had a death in the family on me first and the yeah, Mark's dad passed away relatively suddenly. So we still have family in town until Tuesday next week. So I was thinking, you know, right after Memorial Day. So that's only.
Oh, we.
He's dead, so I'm like, yeah.
Yeah, so which seems hard, but it's pretty close. So that's what I was thinking that.
That's what we discussed yesterday.
Right, right.
That seems feasible. I mean, it's not, we've waited this long, right? What's that wait for you to?
Right.
And generally, how long would it would it take to complete?
Now, that's kind of the question.
And say the long side, we're just trying to get at, I mean, is it three weeks? Is it a month, two months? What do you?
Well, I.
What do you? Ballpark, and we're not gonna hold you too, I'm just curious.
Oh, basically, we when we go out on a job, our basic analysis, that first part, that first step, it only usually takes us in the ballpark of an hour per site. So we have to try to look at what we have and then base our base that further on down here with after we have a little more discussion.
So we need a little bit of planning time, looking at, because West Bath is kind of like parks in a lot of other towns. You know, it can take a long time to get from one point to another. So you want to look at the files, see what the apps are. So we need a, you know, a day or two of planning, the best way to do it, so that we don't waste a lot of time.
Sure. Yep, map out.
Don't be a little waste of your time or ours.
Understood.
So then we have the site visits and then having to, you want, do you want, would you need printed pictures? The pictures that we take where they need to be printed?
In an ideal world.
Okay, so obviously, we'd have some office time printing that stuff out and just making sure that our field work is, you know, complete and legible. That will be his job and he's more than I am. I understand my own writing, but nobody else does. So I don't think, just in a ballpark world, I don't think it would take two months, but somewhere up to that, because we do have to have our other work going there as well. I think that we could devote.
Being that I would be doing most, most of that part of it.
In the office.
Yeah, office, I can see up to two months, you know, something to be required.
So by August one, you're to?
Yeah, yeah. I think we could probably devote, you know, two days a week to it. Maybe more, but I don't want to promise one of them.
That kind of covers what I'm, so Christine, how, where are the files? They already be distributed and evaluated? How close are we to getting that ready?
There's a file in between John and Carly's offices. They just need to be.
So readily available?
Yeah. Yeah, because they've already set them aside for pickup work.
So I guess what's, I, well, I guess maybe Christine could preempt it and expedite this process. Maybe we should start making copies of those, because someone's gonna need them, generically speaking.
Set of tax maps, so the building permits by Matt and Lonner can be annotated on a set dedicated to the field work would be my strong suggestion. It also helps when you're on the road deciding how many slots that day will accommodate. Something should have a dedicated set of tax maps that is recognized that will be mapped out.
And then, because we're roughly a week out in theory from starting, so if we can get all of that paperwork readily available to disperse, that will help.
If we had the paperwork, we could obviously be looking at, you know, and making, you know, and that would be our, some of our planning planning time. So before we actually, you know, engage, we'd actually have that planning time ahead of schedule, if you will.
Yeah, so if we go forward, sooner the better. On that, right, I understand.
Get the town staff and organize any areas of the town or rooms of the town. Have it all laid out, organized, so they know where they're going, it's easier.
Well, I know West Bath fairly well, do some work over here. There are apps you can use too that will, you can put in a bunch of addresses and it'll root your circuit. It's called Circuit. So we may use that, but you know, it's kind of kind of like one of the things we do with our work. We have one we're looking at and then comparable sales we're looking at. So we're used to rooting around the roots, but it's just a matter of how they're all laid out in relation to each other. So, yeah, if we have, if we had a dedicated set of tax maps would be, I think that's a great suggestion. And then, you know, take the files and root ourselves.
What else would you need? You need the tax cards, the property files, what else would be necessary for you to do this?
The tax cards and the files and the apps, tax maps. There's nothing jumping out at my mind right now else. Just about an assessor, so.
Right, and thinking about some of the other things, remember building photos? You know, we'd have to know what you guys were looking for for photos, so that we can make sure to gather what you what you need and require. Because I know there's a little bit of a difference between appraisal and assessing, so we need to make sure we meet what you need.
What, well, we probably don't know that question. What would you recommend?
Obviously, what, you know, what we what we would do is make sure we have photos of the places where the the structure is supposed to be, if there's supposed to be a structure, you know, solar arrays, make, get pictures of that. Make sure it's, so what's supposed to be on site is on site and after that, like I said, it would be front, front, front sides.
Yeah, all the sides of the building.
So Christine, hearing what they're looking for, how soon could you compile that information?
I will ask the staff to put it together. I'm not sure how long that would take, a lot of other things going on. Some of the past orders, assessment, they're gonna be tomorrow in town today. And I will be starting vacation on Monday, so I'm not sure exactly, but I will get them working on it.
Because we're trying to get them this information also for the quote.
I think I can, I mean, it'd be great to be able to look at the files. I mean, maybe we could take a.
Have we given you the addresses?
Yeah, absolutely, we can go upstairs after.
Yeah, maybe after this meeting, you know, upstairs, take a look at them. And then at least I'll have a look at them and if I could add a, you know, create a list, maybe have the addresses that.
I should add those, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, that should be, yeah. We'll go ahead and look at those today.
Okay.
And I will, then I can get you a quote by Tuesday or Wednesday next week. Okay, well, when is, when is, when is, how far out is Memorial Day?
Two weeks, I think.
Okay, if I can have some photo, you know, by Tuesday next week.
That's, it's actually eight, eight days, five days, a week, just shy a week before Memorial Day. Memorial Day is the twenty seventh and Tuesday is the twenty first.
Okay. I'll give it Tuesday, so that's okay, but.
No way, man.
Kathy, do you have any questions?
I very much appreciate you guys coming in and supporting the town.
No problem.
Y'all set with us?
We are, other than if you wanna, so I, because I know you, I don't, you're gonna go upstairs and look at the information.
Right.
Julie's not here, should we postpone this conversation until she is?
Monday, that's accounts?
Yeah, that way we can adjourn and allow them to go upstairs.
It doesn't make any sense to have the discussion about what you need from the treasury.
The treasury are here, so.
Can I ask why Julie's here?
She had an appointment that we weren't aware of.
Okay, so we adjourn to the annual budget town meeting. Oh, David.
Just a public comment?
Yes.
Are we developing a trash dump here now?
I don't know.
Marine Resources did their roadside cleanup and they thought it would be okay to dump all this stuff out back. We did get the dumpster empty, Cassella came and took care of that. The sofa, Marine Resources is gonna come and retrieve it eventually.
I was going over to Hennessy.
I see your exasperation, I agree.
Well, I have a huge cleanup, and I'm not sure where the couch came from along the shore.
They do the roadside cleanup, too.
Yeah, they do the roadside.
Somebody put the couch out there for the view, really?
So I just want to underscore a comment, just make a comment that this is the second time Julie hasn't been available. And when I have to rearrange my whole schedule and get people to come in and cover me, I just don't think it's appropriate or fair. So we need to do something to make sure that these meetings are gonna happen.
Well, this meeting I felt was important, certainly seemed that way from the last select four meetings, so.
But you know, some memo or something, I could have listened to Tom, you know, maybe away, I could have.
I agree, Kathy, we should manage this a little bit better, because I took off some work as well.
Yes.
Another public comment?
Sure.
I understand this is the pickup work, but in due course, we're getting on to the assessing work. And I would like to remind the board of assessors, amidst all the other shortcomings with the Parker appraisal revaluation of the town, the fundamental flaw in their approach was they have no justification for any parameter in the so-called manual of West Bath values. In particular, as I keep pointing out the example, the base lot values everywhere, there's no justification for any number. So in the assessing work that will happen in the future, where you're using the Trio program and garbage in, garbage out, part of the in is all the information from the property cards, which will be corrected. But the other part is all the parameters that Parker appraisal put forward, again, which have no justification. And upon comparing their results with recent adjusted sales data, there are sort of unconscionably high errors. Just as a reminder.
So where are we on, I know we keep dancing around hiring an assessing agent. Where are we on that, Christine? I mean, what are we?
Good question. The board still needs to decide what that's going to look like.
So why is it we make a decision, because I'm getting tired of it?
I am too. I think we need to.
I was going to put it on your next agenda for regular meeting.
I think we talk about it, I've talked about it now, so we're post.
Well, then I need to lead these folks upstairs so that they can get about their day.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Don't forget your bag.
So I mean, I think we need to truly look at, someone who's got a set amount of hours available, not necessarily, if they don't necessarily agree, Monday through Friday.
Do we have both the RFP done?
I just, it just seems like you haven't gotten forward with it.
So my next question was, why, why do we come here every meeting and I don't know what you want, I don't know what you want? We got the RFP done, let's get it out.
Let's do it. I mean, it's.
Am I missing something? Do you want, do you want a copy of it for right now?
We probably shouldn't get a copy, just to review real quickly.
Sure.
Want our end resents?
Just as an aside, Juanita, have you or any other assessors in town seen the RFP? To comment on, I would suggest it would be good to.
We haven't seen the final copy yet either, to preview.
Kathy, you're absolutely right.
I'm just getting frustrated.
Well, it's just we're not the only.
And we are.
October one is coming at us like a freight train, and we need to figure it out.
And as a small point, for instance, to produce a list of addresses here is a very simple process within Trio of eighty seven building permits. It might take an hour, but you put in what's called a transcode. And by that transcode, the record is then formatted. It could be printed first by Matt and Lonner to identify the tax maps, then with sorted by address and also by account number, which is how the photos need to be done. These are small things that come along with labor power impact.
I'm just trying to.
I mean, have you?
I asked for a list on Monday. No, I have not. I asked for the list to be dispersed on Monday as to what the properties were and it went not to us, but to the contract, so.
See, the thing about hiring, are you talking about an interim assessing agent? Or are you talking about the seated assessor? I need to clarify first.
I know, so I need to go straight to seated, no more interim. Actually, you need to move this process along, we're dilly-dallying long enough. I think we need to get someone onboard and know that's gonna be our person.
Now, to do a seated, at this point, wouldn't we need to have?
A town meeting.
A town meeting?
Yes.
We could forty five thousand dollars aside for.
No, this is for the positions.
But if we did not have the payment, but if we change from the select board acting as the board of assessors to having a seated agent who is the assessor, we're out of it. That would require a town meeting vote, and it is not unwarranted.
So a special town meeting, we need to move forward, we can't keep doing this.
So we ask you a question, what do you think about having? Hold on.
Can you, right now, is still under contract?
We have twenty thousand dollars, we have an annual year.
But you're still under contract assessor theory right now?
Correct, right.
Why can't we do that and get caught up?
We could do a contract.
A short term.
With the offer that this person could become the seated assessor with the approval of a good town meeting.
And we have money in the account now to pay for the short term.
We have twenty thousand dollars, I agree with that. Well, and I think, you know what, I actually like this approach better. We want to make sure that they work out before we put them in a permanent position. So I think we should hire someone immediately, go out to, you know, for requested for an assessing agent. And for between, you know, we've got twenty thousand dollars on the votes between now and the end of June that have been allocated for this.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't want to be rude, cranky, but I don't really care where the money comes from. I want to know how quickly we can get this process out, with our RFP out the door and get this process going, and we'll figure out funding from there.
So Christine, can you get this written up before your vacation?
I can put something together, yes.
We have a document ahead of the next board meeting that we can look at, make our own notes.
Well, she's gone next week.
I changed my vacation because somebody needs to put your packet together and I'm in. So I am taking abbreviated vacations.
Good, thank you. So we.
So our next meeting is when?
June third.
June fourth?
June thirty.
We we set a meeting for the thirtieth, we can change it to the fourth.
We have, no, we have one on the fourth also, May thirty.
Does the thirtieth was a regular or something?
It's a Thursday.
That's the date that you settled on because it was too far between meetings.
Okay. Yeah, and my my concern was at that point, was that if we had an RFP, we'd be getting it out.
Yeah, I'd like to get it out, I wish you could. When do you go on vacation, Christine?
Monday.
Monday. So you think you could wrestle up something to now and Friday?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. So if we have the RFP, we can get that out. I'd like to get it out, you know, in theory by Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, because we don't even know what we're gonna get for response, we don't even know what's out there. This wouldn't be the, a good way to figure out what, if this is the direction you're going. I don't, is anybody that, what's going on?
Right, right. Well, and also, we should, you know, an idea, we should have it, you know, temporary positioning from now for the fiscal year, end of June thirtieth, with a transition to a more permanent position the following fiscal year. I think that language should be in that RFP, so that we can entice people to see the value in West Bath.
Now that the data has its hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking, I'll stop that.
I hope the trusted board will willingly hold any special board meetings you need to speed this process up.
Abs- absolutely, you only. So I'm traveling, although ironically, we had a remote meeting last night with Max. I'm traveling Sunday through Thursday of next week, but we'll find time to attend a remote meeting. It worked quite well and certainly a good option, since I do travel for work, to participate in that spectrum.
So who is going to assist with that meeting if I'm not here?
Carly ran it last night.
Carly may not be available. She has other things she needs to do.
This is important for the town, Christine.
I understand it's important for the town, but if Julie's not here, Julie is going to be out part of the time next week. And I believe Carly has a meeting out in Augusta as well. There are schedules that we need to work with.
Can you check on staff?
I can see when they're available, but I just don't want to make any major, you know.
I can go forward to, if you could have a list when you and your staff are out, it would be very helpful. It's.
We can have a list, we're still waiting on a list from Suzanne of her time away. It goes both ways, we need to know her planning.
And I'm prepared to accommodate that on a travel schedule, since we had a remote meeting last night. That limits my travel conflict quite a bit.
I think there should be some restriction on being away at this time of year, because there's so much that has to be done in a certain timeframe. And I think the staff should understand that. Maybe it hasn't been pointed out.
Well, I think we need to know what we're talking about, because Carly and I plan our vacations around meetings. We were not expecting to have meetings the last two weeks of the month. That changed, so we're needing to be a little bit flexible, which is fine. But when we're covering so many meetings, it's hard to plan time off during the year. And, you know, I've got weeks of vacation piled up that I have not taken. And we really do try to plan around town meeting and other things that are going on.
Well, I also think you should expect things to blow up around town meeting, in particular, knowing what's going on with assessing.
It's all right.
I know, I know you have problems doing this, but I think this has been going on so long that I don't see why it isn't an absolute priority right now for everybody. I can understand they have a death in the family, but I'm kind of getting tired of hearing about vacations.
And it's not just vacations, it's trading and other things that are going on, you know? Carly and Julie have places they need to be once in a while.
We should also have those trainers.
Hostages, we can, I mean, we can, I can work around on those any schedule. And now that we see the remote meeting, meetings work, I've never offered that as a solution.
And I just need to tell you that it doesn't fit into our remote meeting policy right now. I'm not saying.
Why didn't you do it last night?
I'm not saying that we can't make an exception, because that was not a town official.
So an official town meeting, what's the difference?
I understand that, but it wasn't an official who was remotely here, so.
I'm confused.
It wasn't a remote meeting, it was Max just joining the meeting.
Which is the same thing I'm doing.
Yes.
Joining the meeting remotely.
Well, I'm just explaining to you that we do have a policy that currently has restrictions around that. We can make exceptions. We'll figure it out. But I just want you to be aware that we currently have a policy that doesn't...
Can I see that policy?
Do you need that?
I don't have it with me right now.
Last night? He promoted him to the planning board meeting to talk about LD 2003.
Thank you.
And I attended the meeting. But I've never been offered the opportunity. And everyone knows I travel for work. It's I can't control some of my meetings that I go to. But I can certainly manage an hour out of my schedule to attend a remote meeting from somewhere in the country. So I'd love that to be an opportunity to be to serve the town better.
The remote... The remote policy was adopted as we were coming out of COVID. So you should be able to find it in your files.
And I'm sure the town should have it as well.
And there's something that this select board can imagine.
And I'm sure this isn't going to be a favorite topic. And people are going to say, why does she have to bring this up? But we do need to meet with Christine regarding the project.
We do. And we still have a battle. Can you please get that to us?
We're talking about a lot of different topics right now.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we're concerned about assessing, let's please talk about assessing right now. Because another thing that...
Didn't know we were stuck on assessing.
I... We'd like the board to understand also, because you might not be aware, is that when we do finally have a town meeting vote on whether or not to have a seated assessor, that will take effect ninety days from the vote. So there is a time period. There's a lag. So it won't go into effect immediately.
So then our RFP should say that it's a hundred-and-twenty day window at a minimum for a temporary position. If we have thirty days in this fiscal year, we go ninety days. Cast that looking at four months. That should be what our RFP is for. That is, it's a hundred-and-twenty day position with potential for more in fiscal year. So that could be a reference in the RFP. That'd be great, Christine.
Why not make it six months just for the ease of doing that?
I'm okay with that. I mean, it's just something that we can start today and move forward. We can, you know, we can say, so we can say for six months with the potential to convert to permanent seated assessing based upon a town vote.
And as far as vacation due to, I'd like to point out that we have in the personnel policy that if an employee does not take their vacation within the year, they lose that time. And fitting vacations in around meetings, I know, has been difficult for members of the staff. So we can't be talking about...
But the annual town meeting? The annual town of West Bath has a significant issue that we have to address. So we need to address it. It's that simple.
We can't be talking about this. We're talking about a second.
Right. So what I'm saying is that if we're in the middle of talking about this, we also need to be mindful that the end of the year is coming.
Madeline, what do you think? Okay, for other people, but when I say something, I'm talking about it. She just said stick to assessing.
Okay, we'll stick to assessing.
I'm sorry.
I was inappropriate, and I apologize.
So what's the timeframe that we want? Do you want to say this is a six-month temporary position with the opportunity to convert to a permanent seated assessing assignment?
Six months gives us and them time enough to decide whether or not this is something that is doable for them. It also gives us the opportunity to put together the information for a town meeting, to have hearings, et cetera, without rushing into having a change in the way that we do govern. So we have a person on board. They have the option of becoming our permanently seated or stated seated person. And then we go forward.
So Christine, can you put that in the RFP that we've got? That it is a temporary position with a purpose of converting to a seated assessing position required through the... Through a town vote. Something... We want to understand the reason why it's being delayed is that we have to have a town vote to add a position. But we don't want to delay the process from starting.
Yes, why do you have?
In terms of whether it is a contract agent or a seated assessor, I'm going to re-articulate. Recognize that when you're not talking full time, the idea of being an employee or a highly qualified assessor, the IRS and that assessor have a clearly defined relationship. So when you put out your RFP, be cautious that you don't imply the seated aspect is intended to definitely become an employee. You may want that to be an option, and you may decide to prefer it. But be cautious that that implication isn't there because you'll get zero response to your RFP.
Right.
And a highly qualified assessor is going to CC a town administrator upon any communication, most likely with you. But even if they're seated, they're... It's not a town manager. They are responding through the municipal offices. Or if you're the agent, they are the agent dealing directly with the elected assessors. I've never, there's one exception, but a memo that a town administrator was known on CC with all information provided. But that is critical. And your warrant has assessing as a portion of the administrative article.
Right.
Not as a separate article for the assessor. So thank you for letting me express it because you're out to get this notification.
So should we... Are we calling this a six-month contract assessing agent?
The other reason, and I'm answering you directly, which is not my style, that I would keep it as a contract. It's going to be highly qualified assessor. It's going to be dumbfounded that that regale has no data. That is the absolutely most vulnerable, worst I've ever seen. And if you give them as an employee or a contract asset, if they're not given the opportunity to use the absolute... It's not scarcity data, the nonexistence of it. I'm concerned that behind these towns that after sixty and ninety days, they want... Because it's going to be on the plate to take care of a company. Taking care of them didn't. So it's another reason to stay in a contract position on the initial. And be prepared for that as well. So it's an indirect answer, but...
So... Okay. And so would you say six-month contract assessing agent with future plans for permanency? Or just leave that out?
I don't think we could have that in the RFP for the...
I think what you can do once you're three or four months into the contract, have that discussion.
Yeah.
I would agree with you.
Okay.
I assume a lot of...
And so what I mean, I suppose there's going to be a seated assessment agent yet? Is it a contract assessing agent?
Oh, it could be eventually become a seated assessor by contract. You could potentially mention that, that the discussion down the road is, would be open if it was mutual way
Right, right.
to discuss seated assessing by contract.
Right.
We don't want to scare somebody away. I think we want to get him in there, let him see what's here.
Yep.
And then have those...
If part-time, the odds of anyone wanting to be an employee part-time...
Right.
Doesn't make any sense. They're... In terms of what their... What their business is as a contractor to be an employee really would follow you with the IRS. Yes, David?
If what is going to look at this contract before you send it out, would that make sense to you?
Absolutely does to me. Does to me.
Not from legal opinion, just a general opinion, right?
That makes sense because we don't want to get the...
Well, I'm assuming that she's seen advertisements for assessments or appraisers. So it should be an inkling. It should be an inkling of what it should look like. If she would be to do that, I think you should do that.
Yes.
I would be open to that if it would be...
We love your input. We love your input and appreciate it.
So if we... If we see a draft RFP and comes to us as part of our packet, then we can make sure that you all have it to look it over. And we would invite you to be part of the conversation as we discuss it.
So, Madeline, just to clarify, your meeting is in two weeks.
Yes.
You would want to see it. When do you want to see it?
Ideally, if you could get it before you leave, that for us to get a first look at it, then we can evaluate it and make edits. Are you back on the 24th? Are you gone all of next week?
No, I'll be back Thursday, Friday because Julie is out Friday. And I want to get your... I was planning on getting your packet ready for the following week.
Can we... To shorten the creative process, can we take a look at what you had given us as samples? And kind of...
Kind of play with that?
Mix and match so that you're not able to something, you know, pull something together out of thin air, as it were. And then we can mark it up and get it out. And hopefully by the first June, first June meeting. Or before. Or before we can finalize it. But I think we've always wanted to see a final draft before we voted on someone. So I think we did. Like you said, we probably got eighty-five percent of that work done in that actual. So we should be able to...
We should really see it before she leaves. And if we get a chance to look at it by Friday before she heads out of town. And then we have the chance and certainly have a morning to take a look at it as well. Are you all available to reconvene on the 24th at some time next Friday or either Friday?
Yeah.
So why don't we plan on having a meeting then, the 24th?
That's a Friday, you were saying?
It's a Friday. So the only conflict I have is I have a 10:00 AM conference call. I could come here at 8:30?
No, thank you.
Or then we have to maybe do it at noon?
Afternoon.
Because I have an hour and a half call from 10:00 to 11:30. Does that work for everyone?
Can we do it at 1:00?
1:00 past 2:00.
Okay. Does that work for you, Christine?
Um, yes.
So on the 24th, let me have that here.
It works on Monday?
I will attend with that.
I want to make sure you have draft copies.
An idea of this goes out Tuesday, the 28th, after Memorial Day.
Right on the comment.
David?
Just keep this simple, straight to the point. And don't put too much in there. Keep it simple.
Make it attractive.
Well, I mean, we're about that right now.
We want to get so much to...
Just get it out in a simple form.
We want someone to... We want people to respond.
So future agenda items and select board comments. Again, I want to know when we are meeting with Christine regarding the contract. If it is a contract or why we haven't seen it.
Madeline, can you please get that to Kathy?
I'll bring it to you on Thursday.
And then I know this is...
Can you just email it to us?
I would rather than...
Okay, you send it to Christine and have her email it to us?
I would rather that it was in hand rather than electronic.
So what is our process going forward as far as... Christine is really pushing on this, wanting a contract. We keep somehow going around the hallway reports. What is the process?
If we meet with Christine in executive session on the evening of the 4th?
We ask for the town attorney to be present. So we need to...
Well, yes, I would like the board to go on that if you want that or not.
I'm looking for the town attorney to be present while we have a conversation about Christine's contract.
Then we don't have a town attorney. We don't know when we'll have one, right?
Well, we have. There's one that Madeline's been working with at Jensen Bear.
Jensen Bear is still... Is still... So it could be if I can ask.
Okay.
Well, I have a call. Madeline, you were... I actually called into Alyssa. Kathy and I voted for me to be the talking point for that at the previous meeting before you were there. So I'll reach out and suggest that. So we're inviting her to the meeting on the 3rd, 4th?
What was that?
6th. June 6th.
Are we meeting in executive session before the regular meeting? Or are we waiting until after?
Let's see what she's available for on now.
Oh, see what her availability is before or after. So one of the other things, so that's going through my notes. And I know this probably doesn't make any sense now, but I don't want to get here. We were going to discuss the posting of roads and have a policy?
I have a policy written that you can adopt at any time.
Okay, so it's one of those things that are just split off. And once the roads come and certain individuals in this town want to do what they want to do, we still don't have a policy. I think we need to get it...
It's written. It's ready. You can go on the agenda whenever you want. As it's a traffic ordinance, the board can adopt it.
Can we get it on here sometime in June?
Yes.
We've seen... But we do a lot of this and then it all sorts it here again and it's... Oh, we don't have a policy, so.
Yeah, you can't stop him from...
So we shouldn't... Do we want to invite Julie to that? When do we want to have a conversation with Julie about the reports?
I do have all of the reports that she gave me that I can easily go over if you want me to.
I think I'd like to look at them and then maybe ask some questions. Some questions afterwards if that's okay?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, if you wanted to come to the meeting, I can let her know in advance when you were likely to be there.
But I wouldn't even, once I read this, I wouldn't have a problem stopping in and asking Julie, you know, what it says to me.
And I think if you do it individually, I think that's fine too. Just come in and talk with her. Because I think what she's looking at is the one that says open floor the most. This has the most detail. I think if you take some time to look at this and sort of see if you can read it and understand it. She broke it down by months because that's the way to sort of get running.
Because I think some of this problem is us not understanding it. And when you're not going to be able to move further if we don't understand. So it's not necessarily Julie or the database she's using. A lot of it is us being able to understand.
Exactly. So this is the report that she's expecting you to sort of lean toward because it has the detail and a semi-running total, which I can't remember if you asked Boarder Suzanne did. But one of you had mentioned that that would be helpful. And...
So is she here now? Is she back?
No, not back yet. And then another of her questions was for you to think about whether you want every single department or just, for example, town administration and public works. And this first sheet of paper shows you what our departments are. So for example, if you don't need to see welfare, if you're not concerned about general assistance, she just wouldn't provide that report.
But I see like current, but I'm looking at public works. Current budget, debits, credits, unexpanded balance.
Yeah.
So what was all that debit put on? Is this kind of where I'm at? You know, the bit...
And that's where the detail comes in. And she can do these detailed reports. She can break them down by department.
So it's... Okay, yeah. Because again, I can see where the road commissioner has issues. I really don't really see anything up here.
So this is just town administration. This is just a sample.
So I really would like to dig in more to that. Especially as we're moving forward and he's giving the computer and stuff. I think we need more detail on what needs to be done. He's actually doing a priority list. I mean, what we still, I think, I don't know how long I've been here now. Six or seven years. I still have not seen a priority list. And I would really like to see that because you think I have, I don't know. It's just been the same three roads forever. What's next?
Well, I thought we had, um, did we, did we hire someone to evaluate roads? Another data hasn't been input yet. Where are we on that?
No, we didn't hire anyone.
We're waiting for a town meeting. We have to wait until the budget approved.
I know he was going to look to Mitchell Ward, but it sounds like he has another job now.
I think he's sort of wanting to work with Iron Tree. I think that's what he's thinking about.
Is that people who share a stamp?
He's a bath cop, I think.
Oh, he's a bath cop, yeah.
But, and he did, seemed to work with the bank at the last meeting. But I wonder, I hope that these, uh, road accounts will be available on his computer.
Absolutely.
So he can look at it anytime.
Yeah.
Well, it could be a shared Excel file.
Whatever it is, make the information available. If you must look at it on a daily, weekly basis, you can come here, you can look at the printout and see where it's at.
He should be able to receive a shared Excel file.
Yeah, that would require the trio be on his laptop. I'm not sure how that will work, but we can look into it.
We don't need to put it, we don't need to give him a subscription. We can do a shared Excel file.
Or you can send him the, uh, report.
Right.
Oh, yeah, for sure. We can send him a report. I'm just not sure about looking up the trio.
Can do a job without knowing where they stand and their kind of, their spending. I mean, I go to that one more good if I didn't...
It's probably the last of the road bill, though.
Yeah. I pay some road bills too. That's what you get to be a private.
So when do you want Julie to be at your meeting?
I'd say that...
May 30th? Or June 4th?
Or another time.
So we could, we could have her come on the 24th. Would you do that?
She will not be here. She has to stay off.
I, um, instead of trying to hurry everything in, I would love to see us do, I would really like to see us get this contract going.
Yep.
Get the RFP out for the attorney. I think what we want to do is important, but I don't think it needs to start till July 1st. I think we got a little wiggled room.
I thought the RFP for the attorney was done. Was that done? Has that been posted? Did we approve the last meeting?
Yes, the attorney's done. Legal services and stuff.
Has it been sent out? Has it been posted?
Is it June 4th or June 6th?
June 6th.
So maybe that meeting?
Oh, it's just the 6th, I'm sorry, 49th.
Oh, okay.
June 6th to the 20th.
Why don't you put her off till the 20th?
That's fine.
Oh, I won't.
You won't be here?
Nope.
I guess it's June 6th. No, it's June 6th. It might be helpful if, if you...
I could do it on the 13th, which is a Thursday.
That'll stick. I, I also, such as it is, have a life. And I would prefer it was to stick as much as possible to the first and third. So it seems the 6th, if you can get the attorney here.
I will find out. I will reach out to her.
So there was something else left over at our last meeting. And I can't remember what it was. If you look at your notes.
I'll page it in the DM.
I am needed for another appointment.
So I have one, um, I hear we purchased a refrigerator.
We did. I authorized the purchase of a refrigerator of this property. It could be dollars.
But why, I guess?
Um, I don't think it's the employee's responsibility to equip the kitchen. And we've all been bringing personal items to, um, you know, make sure that we have what we need. The refrigerator that we had was quite small. The refrigerator that I purchased is well within, you know, the purchasing policy and my parameters that I need to work within. And we had ample funds in that account.
So we had a refrigerator that was working?
It was working. It's too small. It doesn't accommodate everything we need. For example, the sandwiches that we had left over at the meeting with the abatements. We couldn't easily put in the refrigerator. There was no space in that refrigerator. So we opted for a refrigerator that was a bit larger.
Wait, I went and looked at it and all that's in there is mayonnaise and salad dressing.
Uh, right now, that's all there is. But, you know, we, we don't leave for lunch. Three of us eat breakfast and lunch here every day of the week. And when I have a meeting at night, I stay and I eat dinner here. So it would be nice to have a little space to put drinks and stuff. We did not have enough space in that refrigerator. And again, we had no use for the funds that were left in that account.
We had plenty of use. We, we were going to put flooring in the bathrooms. I mean, there's other things that we want to spend the money on.
No, it wasn't that account, Suzanne. It's a different account.
So on this topic, I hate to do this, but I had an individual come to me saying Christine that they had talked to you. And I don't know if it's true, not true, if it's right, wrong, that they did not have to apply for a contract for planning, that it was theirs if they wanted it.
Who would I say that to?
Mr. Travis?
No.
So I just wondered...
Absolutely not.
Wonder if it was because he was under so much or what I mean, the bid policy. I don't know how much he bids a year for that contract.
No, I never said that. I actually told him that we were going out to bid this year, which is something else that we need on our agenda. And he was not happy about it.
I thought we just gave the snow power contract a three-year renewal without going out to bid.
No, this is the small one.
You know, why would we go out to bid on a small one and not a large one? I mean, it seems like a contradiction.
We extended his contract last year.
At least two years.
Yeah. And I told him we weren't going to extend it.
I'm sorry, I'm, I would have to be on that. I just asked him because he came to me and said, I just want you to know, I was told that you might have to do an hour and a half.
He wasn't told that by me.
I, he said it by you and that he didn't read to stay at the price that he was charging this year.
No. That was the conversation last year.
All right. So we'll be expecting our RFPs on that.
Yeah, more bids on that.
So you have everything out for the lawyer to try to hire a lawyer? You're going to have everything out for this assessing agent of some kind? I don't know if that's why I turned it off. Is there anything else that's immediate that's supposed to be done? Do you have everything you need for it?